On the bicycle, the registration part, wanted it to be registration for one year. It doesn't say that.
I didn't catch the charge for one year.
Yes.
Can we give you the one year?
Yes.
Well, you didn't catch it. Do I already know that one? I want to go back with us and the one year registration.
It always says so.
So does that necessarily?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
One addition to the agenda under home business, George, as we talk about power touches for a couple of minutes. We won't make a decision, but she's going to give a report on the home business. If that changed, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still move.
Motion and a second, discussion of questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call. In the minutes of the March fourth meeting, have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Motion and a second, discussion or questions in the minutes. All in favor, will say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And we claim bills in between eighty-two thousand three twenty-nine sixty-seven. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second, discussion or questions? Have a motion, second, on the bills in between, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And the current files, twenty-nine thousand five nine five oh two, do I have a motion to approve that?
Still move. Second.
Motion and a second. Do I have any comments, questions?
I have a few questions. On page five, records the way down, exterior lights replaced, five hundred and sixteen sixty-three.
On the backside of the Mueller Center, the lights were out back here, the fixtures need some upgrading.
Were they not, are they not part of the other lights that we have maintenance on?
No, they're on the building themselves, they're not out of the street light type lighting or the Freedom Trail lighting.
On the next page, at the top, machinery and equipment, a compactor.
That was the replacement lacquer packer that was purchased for the street utility departments.
And then on the page seven across the way, halfway down, the twenty-one ninety-seven twenty-six, Boulder Falls Property Owners Legal Services.
You had a long session with the attorney last meeting, that's the start of our cost towards defending that lawsuit now that we've exhausted the insurance coverage that we have for Big Old.
And this is the Boulder Falls suit against the city?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the files? Yeah, I got one, page four. This is equipment for resale.
Golf course pro shop, it's the stuff getting ready for the spring to sell at the pro shop.
On page seven, we've got Miles Handymans, who has ballast replaced.
Lights in the police department. The ballast went bad.
Those were old lights to begin with, weren't they? They were in there before and they just replaced, put them back up?
Yeah, they weren't new light fixtures at all, they were the existing light, whatever was remodeled for the police department.
Right.
I'm not sure when that was.
Question, why an electrician would recall?
I wouldn't think that it would take an electrician to replace a ballast.
I don't remember, I guess. I think it was just a replacement. I don't have time to license that to me. I don't believe an electrician would be cheaper. Katie? Any other questions on the bills? On the second page of your bills, you have qualified pre-sorting service to process and mail the water bill. The service leaders on Sioux Falls that actually mail some water to you. So that covers postage and everything?
Yes. The majority of it is postage.
Well, you think that might seem pre-sorting, if like there's three or four different tickles, I can imagine you send water bills to three of them.
Actually, we send several of them out of town. People that are the snowbirds that are down south, they're paying utility bills. We probably, I'll take a stab in the dark, but there's at least a dozen.
But that's the name of the company. I think even if you did sort anything, it'd be the same, the same name or check to that company.
Well, they do provide that service though, that's part of their service.
But the name of the company is the electrician.
Yes.
Any other questions on the bills? Have a motion, second to approve the current claims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And communication from the public? Katie, lift your hand.
I'm Katie Brown, I'm the Resource Development Director for Poisoned Moss Club and Black Hills, and I just wanted to come today and introduce myself to everybody here. Poisoned Moss Club and Black Hills serves the Hill City Club and also has Greens Club, so I've been there since November and kind of work in both communities. And I just wanted to share a couple of numbers with everybody here for two thousand twelve, complete numbers. At the end of the year, we have four hundred and fifty-one registered members in two communities that serve seven thirty-five kids through community outreach events. We have other events that remind everybody too, that's not just a club member. And the club, it costs eight hundred and forty-four dollars for a child to attend the club all year, and the only cost that they pay is thirty dollars for the entire year, so it really tries to be as possible so that the kids, regardless of their economic situation, can be involved in those positive activities. And so, we really rely on the community then to make up that additional cost. One way that that can be done is by attending our casino night of May eleventh, information about the packets, and also more information on the tickets that are available on our website, which is BGCBlackHills.org. And so, John's just going to talk a little bit about what the club has been up to as well.
Hello. Recently, we've been doing a lot of activities with what we call our smart moves and our CAP program, and both of those are which, teaching our youth the absence of drugs, alcohol, tobacco, early sexual interaction. With the nicer weather coming up, we're doing, we're going to maintain to do a lot of service projects on the community. I believe Wednesday, the Empower Coalition is doing their annual kick butts across America. And that's where we'll be going out by the park and around the neighborhood of the top of the hill picking up cigarette butts. This summer, starting in May, we're going to partner with Key Watch for the Beautiful and Blue Creek in Riverside and in the river. But a big focus I want to do this summer is doing a lot of community service projects and just like, you know, helping teach the kids that this is our community, they help, you know, they help us out, so we need to give back. And that's really the main, the main focus I have for the summer is just helping out and giving back to communities. Other questions, I guess?
Later on in the summer or spring, we might talk with you about grants and projects, and we'll be more towards the rate bracket.
Right. Of the four hundred and fifty-one total members, how many are of all from Hot Springs versus the city? I believe around Hot Springs, last year, we had over one hundred and seventy kids. Our average daily attendance is only around forty currently with the after-school programs. This last summer, we were averaging about thirty-five to forty kids. So, but yeah, totally, just of all the registered members that we have, it's around one hundred and seventy, just in the Hot Springs area, and so, and that's always a number that we want to increase, so.
Right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry?
Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival again this year is the same weekend as Miss South Dakota, and it's going to be June twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth. And I guess, just I get the blessing from the council for that weekend. Busy weekend, not only in the park, but downtown too. One other quick comment, we do have a line item in our Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival budget, Park Improvement, and I think we're working with art show guys in the park, people to maybe come up with a little money for a drinking pump for, for at least this coming summer season.
Okay. I remember we actually normally approved the use of the park for the arts and crafts there, so I entertain a motion to use the park, June twenty-eighth, ninth, thirtieth, for the arts and crafts.
Move.
Motion and a second, discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call.
Thank you.
Any communication from the public, does anything?
Question and comment? Question is, since I've attended a lot of events in this other building, especially the gymnastics, and they were just using like a carry open machine, you know, to talk in, to let people know what was going on in the city or anything, does that side of this building have a P A system or something there?
Yep, there's one over there, because it's been used at different times. Like this one, do you know right off?
Yeah, we have a P A system, it's right in this room over here. If they request it, we let them use it. We also have a plug-in behind the man in the cowboy hat, right in that area there, it does also work in here. Nobody has asked for it, but if they do, we do give it to them.
I was thinking about the upgrade doors. The other thing is that, I noticed that the sidewalks on Chicago Street are excellent, but the sidewalks on North River Street are really bad. They're cracked and chipped and raised and, you know, I walk a lot, and I always, I'm always washing the ground, you know, so I...
We know that, we've been addressing it, and we don't really know the best way to handle it, because if we force everybody into having to fix the sidewalks, it's going to be a financial burden, we don't want all that.
I wasn't sure who was responsible for that.
People.
All people.
Okay, any other communication from the public, Jerry?
Do we know any more information about Johnson Building?
On which one?
The Johnson Building.
The condemnation buildings that she's talking about?
Oh, the soil. Yep. We've got a report coming on that, Craig, you want to grab a part of it now?
I gave it.
Okay.
Are you going to fall in?
Is that the one, you are, because that's close to the building?
Yeah, the one that, well, see, I'm sure Walton Building next door, and then that building is next.
Well, I went in there with the chief of place and the engineers, and it's in really bad shape, in my opinion, if it's tore down. It's not going to fall down soon, but if nothing's done, it might, it's undermined real bad, the foundation.
What's this?
Well, we haven't got that before, but it's happening.
No, I think it's due next week.
But there's bottle stacks holding it up. What do you have?
We know we have to do, or at least we think we have to do something with the building, we're waiting for the engineers' report to come back. Thanks, Craig.
Is the engineer going to give a recommendation on what should be done with the building? Or are they just doing something?
It's structural, it's near my phone, it's oil, it's...
I think between the two, we're going to find out if the building is safe and not safe, and based on that, I think we'll have to make a decision, but we can ask them their opinion at that time. Any other communication from the public? Not much, continue, ordinance, we've got three ordinance now, we've got a second reading and two first readings. I might just remind you that in the last two years, we have done, two and a half years, we've done fifteen chapters already, we've got seven more chapters ready for certification, and we're working on nine other chapters at this point, so we're trying to get everything caught up, looking at some of the old stuff that happened in the ordinance that aren't, that aren't right or any good anyway. This is the second reading of the traffic ordinance. I've gone through this, the last two meetings, it explains what it is. Do we have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Have a motion, have a second to approve. Is there any discussion, if this is a public hearing, it's a second reading, so any questions? This is the time to be heard, for our official questions, we're talking. Any questions from the council? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to approve, the second reading is an ordinance, call the roll please.
Ashley?
Yes.
Bart Lomi?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Weenya?
Yes.
In unanimous, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Next ordinance is the first reading of the Bicycle and Skateboard Ordinance, and I recorded quite a bit of the ordinance at the last meeting. There are three changes that have happened since then, and I wanted everyone to know about it. On page six, if you have the ordinance again, the ordinance, it used to say that bicycle riders under the age of eighteen were required to wear a safety helmet, we changed that to sixteen. And same thing for skating at night, and equipment required for speed work in the scooters. It did say that if they were eighteen years, we have to drop that to sixteen, that they have to wear a helmet, and also reflective clothing at night. And the other change that was made is that the riders when they skateboard, scooter, roller blade, similar device, in the skateboards are passed to have helmets, have to have some sort of safety helmet. So there are changes to what I had said before. This is the first reading, so, it's the pleasure of the council on the first reading, do I have a motion to, except, oh.
There's one other, one other thing that needs to be addressed.
You know, I looked...
And it's on page four.
Where did it say, the end where there's the annual license?
If it's under bicycle registration, it said it will be renewed in January of each year, and I don't have my copy of that anymore, but I notice that missing.
It does renew it, to be renewed the first of every year.
First of every year in January.
We missed that when they put this together, because normally, we try to put in the old stuff across the...
Right.
And so, this should say, the registration is due the first of every year.
Right.
So that's also changed to the first reading, before we have it.
We should also put the word. Police Department, Police Department, it is... And that's all I'm going to say today.
Twenty-one days, twenty-one days, it used to be within two days, now it's twenty-one days for you to register.
Does the ordinance say on electric bike, I have a electric bike, and a electric scooter?
Electric scooter, bicycle style?
No, it's like a... It goes thirty-five, as long as I don't have to put that on.
Hoping I'm on the sidewalk.
To be honest, I'd really like to move people towards at least moderate head here, get the warranty to do anything like that, but just for your own safety.
What's the city ordinance on it?
Well...
I know it has to go thirty-five miles an hour.
Let's see, you're actually a gas-powered vehicle, or electric?
Maybe it used to have, when I first moved there.
Well, to be honest with you, at this point in time, we really don't have any of that on here, because we separated to let the kiosk have manually operated the bicycles. I think you would probably fall under the gas operation. I think it's a motorized vehicle. Motorized, yeah. It's different from licensing from state, and it is more like...
Yeah, I don't have that.
Right, you don't have the license, it's under so many...
It raises thirty, thirty-five or fifty cc's.
Fifty. But I think the electric bicycle is not covered by a bicycle, so I think it would be considered a scooter, a motorized vehicle. We have several changes, two more changes to the ordinance that we are having the first reading. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading?
Move.
Second. Motion and a second, discussion, questions? Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the first reading, Bicycle and Skateboard Ordinance, it's an ordinance, we call the roll please.
Bart Lomi?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Weenya?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
In unanimous, Mr. Mayor?
Fair ordinance, there's a first reading on Parks and Recreation Board, this is also one that I talked about before, it's one of the cleanup ordinances, it gets rid of some of the stuff that we don't think we probably want by ordinance regarding the golf course, as far as all rules, etc. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of the Parks and Recreation Board?
Still move.
I'd like to make a motion, but we table this until after plunge vote.
I have a motion at the table, so after plunge vote?
Second.
And a second, no discussion on the table, I would like to say, I won't. I have a motion and a second to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's four, four. And opposed?
No.
No. That's also four, I'll break the tie by saying no. On tables.
Well, I guess, I got some questions in here on some of the things. Why isn't the Parks and Rec Board kind of overseeing this and being involved in this?
It's the way it was, and this is the clean, right, now we have a parks, now we have a Parks Board that has control over the golf course. And you know, I have a Parks Board that I have appointed, because that's my fault, I didn't realize it until we started making up this company three months ago.
You guys talked about it five years ago, Dave told me.
Five years ago, I wasn't here, maybe they did.
Well, in the Board Authorities and Duties, it says here that any character is authorized by and to carry out the normal business and functions of his department and to sign reacquisitions upon the city administrator or finance officer, board funds under control of and authorized to be expended by the board. All such warrants with permission of the duly-appointed board shall be drawn by the city administrator or finance officer, and in fact, similarly signed by the mayor and city administrator or finance officer. You guys don't think maybe the council should have a little say in this too?
I think the council will have say in this. Carol, could you explain, you and I've talked about it, but I don't want to get secondhand with you, could you explain basically what this Parks and Recreation Board ordinance does, how it's set up by state law, and then how we would if we choose to give power to this board?
Okay, the state law is pretty, forever in South Dakota law, there's been a park board, or a rec board, or a combined board, and in a lot of cities in South Dakota, small towns, the council delegates to those, to the Park and Rec Board, the, a certain amount of budget, and then basically that board that you choose has the authority to do the things that you give authority to do. So, if, for example, in, for this town, one of the things that is a class two misdemeanor under our current Park and Recs Board ordinance are the rules out of the golf course, which doesn't need to be like that. But, on the other hand, you would be seeing those in resolution form that would come back up to you to decide, for you to kind of give your stamp of approval. The Park and Rec Board would be a part of the scheduling, if you want to give them supervisory authority over the people that work at the golf course within certain budget limitations, that's up to you. In most towns, they run a swimming pool. For example, this ordinance is modeled pretty much off of Watertown, where in Watertown, they run, the Park and Rec Board essentially runs the zoo, their swimming pools, and their public parks. So, it's just based off of what you want to do, but we have to have the, you have to start somewhere with an ordinance, and this is where we started.
Well, I guess I was always understanding, the mayor isn't the one spending money, it's the council, so I guess, I'm confused here, is how the American allot money? Do you want to clarify that?
Well, if you put it in the budget, then the mayor signs off on it.
It says nothing about budget, it just, basically says that the finance officer and the mayor can basically go out and make. So does this mean we can do a witness with like supervisor and golf person stuff? The board's going to oversee that?
That's up to you.
This is top of page five.
Well, the goal here is to establish a combined Park and Recs Board, at top of five, five. Well, all such warrants, is that where you're at?
Yep.
We asked, all such warrants. Don, do you sign warrants or checks?
I sign checks, yes.
Yeah. All such warrants with the permission of the duly-appointed board shall be drawn by the city administrator and signed by the city, signed by the mayor and the city administrator. So...
They sign your check.
Yeah, I realize that, but when it comes to pointing money, that's kind of our job.
Actually, the membership does have council members, it's not like it's not being represented by council.
Well, that's another thing I have a problem with, you only want one council person.
Well, we can certainly, this is a proposal, this is perfect, you have, Hot Springs has the right, this council has the right to have it any way you want.
This board would operate the same as the library, and I shouldn't say the same as, but budgetary wise, you as a council, by September of each year, have to approve a budget for the operations of the city. The Parks and Rec Board in July would be required to come to the council, like every other department of the city, and make a budget proposal that you would adopt. So, when you adopt the budget, you'd be adopting the spending authority... So when you adopt the budget, you'd be adopting the spending authority to go forward for the next year on all operations of the city to include the Parks and Recreation Board.
In other words, we would save the money for Jason to see we would need them to come forward with the budget of golf course too.
No, that's not true. You still don't need a manager out there. No, it's not saying that.
What did you say, just say that they'll come forth and do budgets, right?
They will make the budget recommendation, but you're still going to need workers at the golf course to mow the grass and oversee the.
Don't mean, don't mean.
Oversee the operating.
No, just means we're going to need workers because they're going to oversee everything.
No, you need a manager out there.
Most of the workers don't even understand how to run a golf.
It's not what it sounds like to me.
Well, a lot of.
This would combine the golf course.
Nope.
Board now.
This is kicking the golf course, they're out of there.
Does this combine the two boards?
The current, under your current ordinance, not the change ordinance, under the current ordinance, the golf course board members come out of your Park and Rec Board. And essentially now I think you're just appointing a golf course board without a Park and Rec Board.
I think it's a greens committee. I don't think it's even a board.
It's, it's just an advisory committee right now. If, if this doesn't pass, I know we have to have a board, we will have a board of some sort in future because the ordinance says we do.
Or you pitch, or you, there is no, nothing in state law that would require you to have any of that.
Unless we by ordinance say we will.
Right, right. But state law does not require you to have a Parks Board, Recreation Board, any of that.
And we already have this in our ordinance.
You already have it in your ordinance.
Councilman Enforce, we continue your.
Yeah, sure, sure.
My only question with this mainly is if you're put in a position after the vote where we need to purchase the plunge, and then become a city pool, what powers can be given? Do we have to revisit this all over? Because there again, you're going to have to have management and all that stuff.
You can make the, the, the pool to be a subcommittee of this. It could be a subcommittee of this um, Park and Rec Board, or the current board that you have too, if I need.
Well, it looks to me like you're going to put an awful lot of work on a volunteer committee overseeing a lot of money. Yep, that's true. Yeah. And you know what it's like trying to get a volunteer to do something like this?
Jerry, do you have a question or comment? So the sub, so the summer rec program is a subcommittee right now?
Not, but it could, it can be if, if the common council wants it to be. It could be under the current one as well.
The golf course could be a subcommittee, the Mueller Center could be a subcommittee, the actual parks could be a subcommittee and uh, Parks and Rec Summer Help could be another committee. It's a matter of how this board would set it up.
And this common council decide which committees we put that.
Exactly.
This ordinance here under the powers and duties of the board. It says whenever the prior approval of the governing body is required before the board can act, such prior approval shall be personally obtained.
That's the down, down council.
Yeah, that's this.
What triggers that?
They're going to have to come to us and ask.
I mean, but it, it's kind of vague to me.
The next document that we draft would be a bylaws and, and delegate that you have to approve. That would be kind of decides what levels of expenditure, if you wanted, if you want every level of expenditure to come up and be approved, fine. If you want things over five hundred dollars, if you want capital things, if you wanted. You can decide.
Because this seems pretty wild.
No, I think that's where the bylaws govern it.
It's what we go into bylaws, but the, but the whole thing is if you want to be sure that your ordinance tells the people that are on that board that they, that you vote the first read, that you're in control and they can't just go out and make contracts or do things without you knowing about it.
Why don't we just write the entry?
Comes under the bylaws.
Yeah, it's always, it's always later on, it's always later on.
We've already got the bylaws in place.
Well, you've already got them in place too, isn't that something? The rest of the council isn't privy to a lot of this.
Oh, is the Parks Board, don't you guys have the?
Parks Board has been advised with this, they did not talk about it in the last meeting, just came up with the last council meeting. They did not discuss it, I think it's the last meeting.
But right after the last, last meeting, they were advised as to what is in this, we'll give a copy of that.
More questions?
I would like to look at the bylaws if it's not.
Now, bylaws, we're not a copy now in all these recommenders, yes, the bylaws are pretty much followed within the ordinance. But this is only, this is only something that Carl put together as a sample, so. They're not, they're not, they would not be adopted.
I think they should be a part of the ordinance so we know.
The ordinance says that the standing committee shall be designated yearly by resolution of the board. After the first board meeting and election as per the bylaws that the board were recommending. We're saying that there has to be bylaws on the board, but we have the facilities aren't bylaws.
Georgia, you said you have bylaws in.
These are.
These are what we're looking at.
Is it, is it too much to ask if we vote on this with the bylaws done along with this at one time?
This is pretty generic.
Well, something, it's, once you establish the board, you give them a guideline to work from. But they have to establish, that board has to establish their bylaws. And this is only a boilerplate.
Basically, all that is is.
Example.
That's, there's, but there's no reason that you can't have them, but I mean, I don't know why we don't just hand them out because, because it's.
To me, we're, to me, we're, I'm sorry to cut you off, but to me, we're voting on half the information because I think most of us would like to know what the parameters are that you're approving. I understand that once the board is put together, they're going to come up with the bylaws.
And, and the council is going to have to authorize it.
So why would we put bylaws together?
Make up something completely different than these, this boilerplate stuff.
This still could have to be something that we're agreeable.
That's going to come, but it come to the council.
Yeah. This is just a generic basic way of starting.
Basically, parameters to them to make your bylaws.
Yes.
And what I'm saying is that would be kind of nice for us to know what you have as parameters that we're accepting along.
I've got nothing wrong with you guys having a copy of everything if you want it. It's there.
It just kind of gives us a full, a better look at what we're looking at, is all I'm saying.
Because you wouldn't be voting on this anyway.
No, I know, but it gives us an idea of what we're pushing forward. At this point, all we're seeing is this and there's still half that needs to be done.
You either have my copy or you could get a copy from City Hall.
Let's, let's get a copy to everybody and let's not act on this tonight then because if I don't want to do something, if most of the council thinks we want to do it, we should probably.
Well, that's kind of how I'm feeling, to be honest with you.
Just, let's get the bylaws out.
We're voting on an ordinance that's in our ordinances that we've been violating for forty years. So it doesn't make any difference, do we do it now or, or the next meeting?
There's already a motion and a second right there.
What's part of injured procedures is to have a motion on the floor in the second.
You don't have a motion in the second, you only had a motion and then you had a table in the middle of. Second happened, so you can let it go without a second if you want true part of injured procedures.
Alright.
You don't act on it.
Let's not act on.
Kurt may have a different opinion.
I don't have a second, so get the bylaws to everyone and if there's other concerns, let's make sure that, that you don't have concerns and the ordinance is proposed. If you don't like something, let's get it the way it should be for the city.
I'd like to see a copy of bylaws personally.
We'll get that.
Okay.
We'll get bylaws started, but we'll not act on this tonight because it's like, I'm sorry, I don't want to have it. Uh, personnel, we have one at the golf course, you can see that in your minutes, we've got Martin hired out there. Old business, we have hired items, the RFP for the here, public safety, Greg.
Do you have questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this gentleman at the golf course, is that a new hire? Mark, no, he's been there for a long time.
That's a seasonal that we bring on in March. Usually we bring on a couple, two or three, and then in April we bring on some more.
Okay, Mark, are we using prisoners at the golf course?
Yes.
And how are they getting here?
I think with the state home.
We, we are sharing the cost to bring them here. It's two dollars and fifty cents an hour is what it costs us to have prisoners uh, work here and we're sharing the transportation cost to the state home.
Do they come from the county or?
Uh, no, the uh, DOC, DOC ships them from Rapid to Star Academy and then we only have to pay the mileage from Star Academy, share the mileage from Star Academy down here to Hot Springs.
So we're not actually paying Hot Springs employee, even Star Academy.
No.
We're, we're, we're sharing the expense with the state and right now the state drops them off at the state home and calls us when they're here and Jason drives over the hump from the golf course to the back of the state home, picks them up and drops them back there.
Thank you.
Hunter?
Yep, old business, Craig.
It's recommendation of the safety committee that we go with the RFP and this, and discuss this stuff to make a contract with Pete Lee.
So it's a motion? Motion, we accept the RFP from Pete Lee contingent to the negotiation for final contract? Will that work, Carol?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that we table this until further discussion of the other council members.
We, we don't have a second yet, so we probably should.
Wait till the second?
Before you actually table.
Do you have a second? I'll give you a second.
Okay. I'll make my motion to table.
Motion to table this until the rest of the.
And have some more discussion on it.
Hey, hold on to the meat. I have a second on the table. No second. Want to be tabled? The RFP discussion.
Discussion, okay, let's get into the discussion. I believe that the RFP stated that we were going to uh, put five hundred and seventy-four acres in this RFP?
Five seventy-one, I think.
Five seventy-one, isn't that the entire airport?
Yes.
And how can the airport be included in that?
The runways can't be included in that, that's where we're going to enter the negotiation.
But if it's part of the five hundred and seventy-one acres, then it's not very clear.
It was also contingent upon FAA regulations and FAA regulations does not allow any mining within the wildlife fence.
So then the RFP is incorrect?
No, it is not because it said the RFP is in, is contingent upon DNR regulations for the sludge dumping as well as the FAA regulations which governs any activity on any airport property.
Okay, so we had to put it all in there?
Because of the sludge dumping stuff, the farming.
See, what I'm saying is the airport, the runways and the hangar areas are part of that five hundred and seventy-one acres. They can't be part of the RFP. I think the area around the airport should be included in it. But not the airport itself.
Part of that could be included from the hay or the crop as long as it met FAA regulations. So the five hundred seventeen because of the, the farming side of it, if you might, uh, would need to be included in it like the feedlots proposal was, or the feedlot lease was.
Okay, is that inside the airport then?
Yes.
Yeah, there's hay inside there. Carol?
Yeah.
As you hear it, are we, are, are we going down the right path as far as?
Yes, yes. Councilman Bryce, Councilman Romi, Harley and I said we worked this um, now months ago. And our, our goal, our big goal at that time is we had several uses at the airport that weren't real compatible, but we were trying to find maybe an idea from the outside that would put these ideas together so that we would maximize the revenue back to the airport through the city of, of Hot Springs. And so what we need to do next, and, and at that time what we discussed is we actually discussed rejecting all goods and um, that was kind of the plan that we were on. But um, Harley had discussions today with me, Dayton, who's with legislature about it and we're going to go forward with this in basically a land lease, a land lease contract and um, based on the proposals that we have, um, Pete Lee seems to be what the council has accepted.
So our RFP is legal and is in within the realms of everybody who has any representation on the front?
Yes.
The auditor general said we're ninety-seven percent there. He said what we need to do is complete our process through uh, South Dakota Code of Fight Law nine twelve, five point one, five point two, which talks about the land leases uh, that municipalities work under. And he, he said as far as they're concerned, uh, we're right on track with what we've done so far. All of our notices that we've done, we've met the criteria that they would look at as an auditor coming in to review our activity.
So I have a question now is if we vote on this tonight and pass it tonight, is there a further negotiation that has to be done with regard to this RFP?
Yes.
And how is that going to be accomplished?
It's contingent on getting a contract that, common council and.
So the contract has to come back to the council?
Yes, yes.
Plus it has to go through the FAA and DNR?
Well, yes, yes, we can't just, but we have to make this preliminary decision before we can go to the next step.
The FAA would not give me any answers on whether we can or could not do what we're doing. They said when you get a contract or a lease, send it to us before you finalize approval on it so we can review it and determine whether we're okay with what you're proposing.
Okay.
Well, I, I understand what Carl's saying there. I mean, because we, we have to keep our old mine site and the gun club. I don't know how we can lease the whole thing when we have a lease with the gun club and with some of our new information, we're, we may need our old mine site. So that's got to come off the table too. So I guess as long as that's part of the, you know, the ongoing negotiations.
That, that stuff's got to come on.
The, um, where we took the descriptions are, just, just so everyone knows, is from our prior agreements with the, um, with the feedlot. That's where the descriptions came from and that's how their leases were all written as well. That doesn't mean that these leases have to be written the same way, but that's where this, this legal description came from.
So the mine and the gun club would have been off that? The feedlots?
It was, and they're on here. They're included in this, yes.
But the feedlot never leased that part.
Yes, it was part of the six thousand dollar lease.
They did.
It was?
Yes, it was.
They never used, they didn't want, we just wanted.
The lease that you've had with the feedlot for the last five years, and I think it was five years before that and maybe longer, I didn't go back to research it any further back than the last ten years, but we're using the same. but we're using the same legal description that was used in the initial lease when the feedlot agreement was first established, which included the entire five hundred and seventeen acres. So they could farm, ranch, run cattle, which they did, which wasn't part of the lease, but they did for quite some time.
Well, actually, it said they equipped them on livestock, so we talked to that.
Yes.
So with all of that, the, the one thing that I think, think can be made perfectly clear to the city, probably through the reporting of the newspaper, is that all of the items uh included in the RFP were examined by each one of the three that bid on it. And uh all questions were answered by the city to each one of them individually. Am I correct in saying that?
I believe that's correct. Any questions?
No, I just wanted to make that perfectly clear to the, the residents. We're here representing them, and this will be income for them. I just wanted that clear, that everybody had this, the, the same items to look at as everybody else.
All three got same proposals.
Right.
I asked the duration of the lease, how long?
We don't know yet. Not until we do a contract, there ain't no.
Didn't he give you a projected, like, Carl told you like thirty years or?
Well, they both said life of mine, but the, the life of mine is undetermined at this point by either party. There's estimates of forty to sixty years.
And that will definitely be a part of the negotiations going forward if these RFPs pass.
Any more discussion?
That's all I had.
I have a motion in the second to accept the RFP from Pete Lee contingent final contract, great vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Abstained.
Posed?
No.
Okay, thank you. Georgia, sorry, well.
Um, basically, I, I wanted to follow up more with the power tech information and a bit of research and stuff like that. And there were about twenty-six items on the information I received, different questions. I feel like the city needs to be better informed, we'll get as far into that issue in the municipal water that could affect hot springs, and I'd like to pursue this under in, in front of the informational council.
Okay, so you're gonna write, or we will write something, and we have to submit more information?
Right.
Okay.
Has anybody heard from the county as to why they retracted their uh no on power tech?
I haven't heard, just read in the paper.
I, I believe there was some pressure there. Um, they, they voted control to uh, uh, they had a few signatures from a couple of the um people that have leases, well, that have leases with power tech, and had signatures, so I'm not bad for them. It's just a lot of political pressure.
How many, how many signatures did they have? Was it a majority of the leases?
I don't know, I think, I think it was like, I think it was like ten of them, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, uh, Carol, do you, do you remember?
No, the only thing that they said at their meeting is that they looked at all the information, and they don't feel that they are in a position to make a decision one way or the other, leaving to a people that are trained in that.
Yeah.
Maybe what your council said.
There's been a lot of pressure on that.
Maybe what your council said.
Joe, Joe Allen voted?
No.
Yeah, Joe voted, voted, he, Joe said that he would support it.
It's because he, he's done a lot of research himself.
Well, eight hundred and ninety million gallons of water is an awful lot of water to be given to somebody
It is.
that they're not gonna pay for.
Well, we. Somewhere we have um five hundred and seventy-five approximately signatures um against um them acquiring that water and probably food that they will not deplete our water source or contaminate the water. So, so far of this, I'm assuming that we have, I, I can see easy, I don't know, several thousands.
Okay. Thank you. New business, we need to, we don't need to, but I'd like it to do a table for the old water shop property. We looked at it a long time ago, we're ready for the flat, flat to be approved. I have a motion to table that. Second, discussion, questions? Am I fair to say aye?
Aye.
Posed, no? And the RFP for the golf course, Tracey, there's your go, public safety.
Uh, Tracy and Dave and I looked over all the, last, looked over all the proposals and came up with the three lowest ones. And we have a copy of the three lowest ones in the package. And that's ones that the safety committee chooses to pick.
I don't see it in my package.
There.
These are all the good, gentlemen, RFPs, so do the job you want, also, surprise.
Yep.
So that motion that we.
Motion to accept, go free.
Motion to take the low three bids for requested proposals on the golf course, go. Our second?
Second.
Motion in the second, discussion?
Now, is there any one of them that stands out as better than the other two? Or are these three separate and three different?
Well, they're, they're all separate, they're independent, they're all independent.
One's lack of one plumbing and one is heat.
Okay.
We, we received multiple bids on each one of those three portions of the project, and these are the three lowest bids for, for each part, Carl.
So this is the, the excess over what the building?
Oh, yeah.
It's supposed to be. They should be close to the end, except for the sewer and the water.
It's through the water sewer, in relation to the old buildings. What, it never ends.
They should, should have twenty, twenty-two thousand left, twenty-one thousand. But he keeps whittling it down, I see his bill for today, it goes for it.
They'll be payable eventually and.
So, it's a problem.
Why wasn't a bid for the septic system?
We, I could wait and see how much money, well, I think we're waiting to see how much money we're gonna have left.
Perhaps they're making a bunch of good with that system.
Well, do they?
No water, it ain't gonna be good either.
Did they, they stub anything in for it?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's all a little bit. Any more discussion?
Well, I had to ask a question.
Yep.
Seems like we're always putting the car.
A lot of the work that was done on the police department was done afterwards.
That should have been the first thing taken care of, that sewer. That deals around.
Where are we coming from, water with this building?
Like, we made this decision yet?
Still counting, it's like.
They talked, they talked about going up from the clubhouse.
Well, I think you gotta cross Calvin to get there, Craig.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, you'll put back into the building, you know, the logic of the place, looks like white is the command. But this, the street down there below the, the maintenance shed from across the street, the golf course. Probably if you were gonna do something.
Trench it there.
You'll, you'll have to go across Calvin's if you come from the pro, from the pro shop.
Yeah, the old's the pro shop.
He owns the pro shop?
The new one.
Calvin owns the pro shop?
The old one.
I'm talking about the new one.
But this is a lot closer, if you just come to get down to the little maintenance building. Is this the maintenance building?
But he didn't wanna tear up his driveway and stuff, so he thought about trenching across the feral. That's what I.
I don't know, if it's come right up that rock, Craig, I don't know what direction you're talking about. No, you're talking about up by the budding green in the old.
Yeah.
I'm talking about down below the first eve by the maintenance shed.
Okay.
I mean, it's all downhill, if you looked at that, you could, I mean, you could run sewer down here, it's just a long lake.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know what kind of rock you're gonna encounter. There is live water in cores, but it's irrigation, I mean, it's, it's good water, and it wouldn't be seable. There is a, another line that goes, a seable line that goes out to that bathroom and stuff. I don't think that's deep enough, you know, to tie in the, it's, it's just not a, they gave way all the access up on the top side when they negotiated this deal.
No figure.
No figure. So, you know, I know septic tanks are a bad word, but it ain't gonna be a bad deal for the users. They're installed properly and after fine. The water's gonna be an issue, and I don't think your electrical proposals have, have, uh, there's gonna be another writing for, for Kopee, because it's not in there.
Yeah, Tracy said it's still the lowest bid by.
Well, it would be great, I mean, but, but just when the council's clear.
But city's been, city's been vital.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That there's gonna be these things that come along, that building got put in there, you know, instead of going with two hundred and sixty thousand or whatever for facility, we're trying to get this thing in, it looks like a piece at a time, because instead of spending all this and putting it all in the bid and having the contractors markup and everything on the front end of the deal, it's coming out cheaper this way. That would benefit if we'd put all this thing together to begin with, and volunteers have done a lot of work out there.
Yeah, they've built all the walls and everything.
A little liner up and, and the prisoners, I think they're gonna start painting it tomorrow. These guys are getting a lot done, so.
Hang on, I have a motion in the second to approve the three lowest bids that we got, any more discussion?
I think we better start planning water sewer for that one where.
You talked about, you talked about. Well, the one thing with this, the main facility you have now doesn't have that. So no worse off than we were then, at least we can move toward that eventually.
So we start planning this. Hold on, all was contentious, Paul, much?
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta have the money to do this stuff.
As I said, that's why we're not specific.
That's why we're doing this one.
That's right.
It just, if the money's available, that's what we need to do.
Any more discussion? I have a motion second to approve those three lowest bids, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, no?
Abstained. I abstained too.
Uh, temporary alcohol beverage license for all for taste of hot springs at the dealer's center, March twenty-third. Do you have a motion to approve?
We'll move.
Second.
Motion in the second, discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, no? And another temporary alcoholic beverage license for all for MMA fights at the dealer's center, eight two six. Do you have a motion to approve?
Still move?
Motion in the second, discussion, questions? Motion in the second to approve, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, no? Shehan bill from Public Works, right, volunteers?
Yeah, we're about ready to get sued on that bill for the back, or the jet truck that had so many issues, but uh there's a problem, if nobody, if I make a motion, I would pay it.
Second.
Without any of the interest charges.
What do you have? Okay, second. And a motion second to pay the Shehan bills about finance charges. Discussion?
What is the uh amount you're wanting to pay, the ten thousand thirty-one twenty-nine?
Be the, be the two, it'd be the two invoices of five thousand seven sixty-seven sixty-six and three thousand one forty-nine ninety-nine. I gotta have that total here.
Any more discussion, have questions?
Well, it just, it looks bad on our behalf, we haven't settled this thing, I mean, this has gone on for a couple of years. We should have settled this thing a couple of years ago.
We did try to settle it.
We've been trying to settle it.
Well, as I recall, we, until I brought this back to the table, it hasn't been talked about for months. And I, I don't like the city looking like we don't pay our bills, I mean, we owe somebody, we owe. Part of this was wrong, our own, we get negligence from having someone try to stack a truck that had no business stacking a truck, I mean.
Nine thousand two hundred and thirty-one twenty-nine is the amount of the two invoices.
That's the figure I got.
I have a motion in the second to pay that, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, no?
No.
And Coldbrook cleanup, is this used, Craig?
Well, we uh, we had everybody clean up out there, but there's a field that didn't go through with it. And just, and I have my petition signed, I have a whole lot of complaints still. So, I'm just curious if we can continue and make these restless people clean up, or can we just give the bottoms off?
There's three places out there.
I think we have to go ahead and get the cleanup done. This won't take the action, right?
Well, we already, we already voted to do it a long time ago, over a year ago. And we just never followed through with it.
What are we talking about, Craig?
Those pieces of property up there, in Coburn.
Blank property?
No.
Now, without his name?
Without.
Who's properties?
There's, there's several places out there that if you drive around, like you can see, if you keep them all named, maybe we could, we can help you with that, but maybe what I should do is just make sure that we get on it and go out there and try and get something.
Well, I agree with that, but there's still a couple of properties out there that are, that are owned by taxpayers that aren't cleaning their properties up either.
That's the ones he's talking about.
Wow.
That isn't what you just said on your lips, you said it was the city's property.
I did?
Oh, I thought you did.
No.
That stuff, that stuff's your debt.
They're city's property.
You gotta get your whispering out.
Yeah.
I wasn't whispering.
Don't, don't these properties have to go to the nuisance committee?
Well, they already did, a long, long time ago, and we, we, we voted to have them cleaned up, but we never followed through with it.
I'll work on that, I'll see if we can gain something on it, if it doesn't happen, then I might have to go back here again.
Okay. Harry Burdette's is one of them.
Yep. Next one, one innovation, we'll vote the renovation, Joe.
Okay. I need to know from the council, there is two properties that are willing to be donated to the city, which are between Joplin and Indianapolis, just east of Orlando City, both sides of the river. And the people wanna know if the city wants them, and I need to give them an answer.
I don't think we need to, we can't take care of the parts we got now, so I don't think we need to do that.
I think it would be, it would present a good position to accept this property, so in, in time, we will own from one end of town to the other, the rights on both sides of the river. And I think for future, and it would be good. I'm not saying that we need to do any improvements on these properties.
We need to keep it moving.
Let's get a motion one way or the other.
I, I make a motion that we accept these properties, and we accept these properties leaving out the driveway that is in question on, behind that four doors.
Right, that's gonna go from that abandoned street from the curb, I guess, uh, to the, to the river. But in the event that the city happens to want to reopen that street, they will also donate that property to the city.
They'll be willing to negotiate that.
Right.
A second? I have a motion in the second that we accept the property on both sides of the river, and on the west side it would be to the curb, which is the blue side of that street. Discussion, questions?
So our goal now is to try to go a property on one end of the Coburn reservoir, pass the firm plans, is our, is our goal?
I'm not saying it's our goal to uh go overboard, but you're talking about a piece of ground that's gonna be able to be utilized with the Freedom Trail and walkway through the town and get the use of the freedom. So I don't see that it would be a bad move to accept it, especially when they're operating it to the city for free.
Also, I don't think it's in the building.
No, it's in a, it's in a front.
So there's any reason why it shouldn't be used.
Trailer trucks, that one, so those things have changed, I don't know.
Any more discussion?
That's why it used to be.
If the street straight were taken, we're set for the property from the east side of the street to the river, yes. And then on the other, and the street is gonna get abandoned.
It is, it is. In time, if the city decides they want that, I mean, the owners say that they will donate to us under certain conditions. But we cannot have to accept it as a way, we're still gonna, uh, get that street, get that street. Anytime someone's offering something to the city, it could be a benefit enough. It's unlikely to be making a decision not to do so.
And it goes past the other side of the, the east side of the river too?
Yes.
It'll go up there, that's a trailer park.
How far up?
About half, maybe, about, maybe some half, about half.
Probably half, half surveyed.
It's already surveyed, both of them.
Yep.
Yeah, but that, for me, not remembering exactly what the figure, I would say about half. So it is an ample amount of property. We use more of that property to have a trail through there where it connects to existing trails. That's all stuff to be done in time. It's not that we're talking about doing that.
More discussion?
I have to agree somewhat with Craig. We have a lot of parks, so we need to kick up our park department to keep these places cleaned up and moved, looking nice.
We'll find no argument from the other. If we take them, then we will have to maintain.
They'll also be taking these properties on the tax return, right?
Correct.
Another burden of the tax.
Correct. Any more discussion? I have a motion second to accept the land on both sides of the river. And on the west side is to the cool side, the other side of that street, there should be a great vote. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
No.
But who said no? Neither. Okay, thank you.
Uh, payroll, that should be payroll, not personnel. Payroll direct deposit, administrative promotion.
No, I, I think I brought that one up. It was brought to, it was brought to my attention that, uh, that the city needs to either, uh, be able to have all the city employees go on, uh, direct deposit instead of having checks from each month, which would, uh, not believe save the city money of having to write checks instead of, uh, just having to go direct deposit because they could have a direct deposit to their checking account, savings account, or it's even possible for them to have a credit card. So I'd like to make a motion on whether the city should do this for the city employees.
So the motion is to go with direct deposit for payroll for the city.
Right.
Now, I have a second, it's urgent, so any discussion?
What are the employees thinking about?
Uh, the way I, the way I understand it, all of them, except for two people, two people that do not want it, but all the rest, they went, but yes.
So people go on a bank account, so how do they get their check?
They could have it through the credit card. There's a, there's a form of a credit card that they could have to draw their checks out.
It's mandatory direct deposit?
Mandatory direct deposit, yes. That's the case where.
I, I think this one went to the NDA, I found it for coming like, I think there's more than this.
A lot of businesses.
Yeah, it is. It's a lot safer.
It is. I thought most businesses gave them an option yet for direct deposit.
Sometimes they will for a certain amount of time and then they limit that time and then after that they have to.
You can't even get child support from the state. Has the county taken this up already?
I thought you did it a couple of years ago.
They did it two years ago?
About two years ago.
Is it possible for us to give them a time limit, say of three months prior?
Yeah, I think you should give a time limit.
People that don't have some, have an account.
Any more discussion?
Cost savings or increase of due.
It's cost savings.
Do you have the actual savings?
Uh, not directly, but you wouldn't be writing checks. What we were having is employees that were customers of Wells Fargo would deposit their checks on Friday payroll and they would not have access to their funds till Monday. And Wells Fargo said that was just their policy. If you were a credit union, First Interstate, Bank of the West, things flowed just fine. So that's what kinda created this discussion a while back. So we started looking into it. So we'll have a fee to get the process started, whether we use our丹银software, whether we use, so our payroll bank for doing the direct deposits. Uh, and that'll be a one-time initial fee and then after that, it's, it'll cost the city nothing. But we have the savings on the checks printing and the cost of the checks.
Do you know, are they doing the direct deposit, they would then have access to that money?
They would have it immediately, yes.
Any more discussion, questions? There are a couple of employees who don't want it, like you heard. Did they, did they give a reason why, man?
Didn't have accounts, so they'll be forced to make a bank account.
Could it affect all the employees in the city or do it somewhere else?
Yes.
Yes.
So it might make a difference to some of them if they don't have an account.
Are they gonna have to get paid due on their residence?
Yes.
I guess, I, I can see a problem here with this summer help. I mean, what, are you gonna have this deposit with your parents' account? Now the parents are gonna give you information on their account? I wouldn't.
The individual, uh, there's a lot of places that do have seasonal part-time help that have direct deposit. They do not write checks for everybody. And there does not seem to be a problem whatsoever.
But I'm saying you're just gonna have to go into their parents' account.
It's not necessarily, they can't open up an account.
You can have an account when you're not.
Divid, debit card type deal?
Yes. I mean, there's three ways that they can go with this. The debit card. But if, if he's really a young person, I wouldn't recommend giving him a debit card. I would rather him have a.
They, they would have the choice.
Right, they would have the choice.
Why, why can't we keep some checks and some of the kids have a choice of checks?
I guess, my thought would be for you to just say, give them a little bit more time, or to get it set up in the, in the motion and go with that.
You're, you're actually establishing a policy for the city.
Okay, any other discussion? I don't think that was a question. We're just gonna do that.
Okay.
The motion says that we will go with the payroll direct deposit, which doesn't say one. Any more discussion? And motion second.
What is the motion? I can hear.
To go with payroll direct deposit for all employees.
With no timeline. I mean, with three months time.
We'll, we'll give them probably three months, okay? It is a part of the motion. Motion is to go with the payroll direct deposit, motion second, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Close call. Committee reports. Carl?
Maybe met March thirteenth. We talked about the special election. Um, we talked about getting flyers out or back sheets out concerning the, uh, election for the March twenty-second forum. We didn't take any action on that. Uh, we talked about the parks and rec ordinance. And it was the recommendation of the committee that we adopt the park and recs ordinance, since it's already in our ordinances anyway. We talked about, uh, the five people that we have on Department of Corrections that are, we're paying two dollars and fifty cents an hour to. We talked about health insurance. Possibility of going into flex plans or, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield one twenty-five cafeteria plan. But at this point in time, we're not gonna stir the pot. We're gonna leave it as it is. We also talked about, uh, fair rate pay on a five-year plan, uh, putting Kathy Gerza and Jason, Jason on those five-year plans so that, uh, they know what they're gonna be doing for the next five years. We didn't make any recommendations here. It could be coming out at the next meeting that we recommend that they would, you put on the five-year rate plan, pay rate. And we just took up the direct deposit.
Just wondering, anything you might want to discuss that, uh, ethical obligations and city council members that.
Uh, yes, I have that right in front of me now. Couple of council meetings ago, we looked at, uh, a resolution establishing the ethical obligations of city council members. And, uh, since then, we have gotten a couple of others and it's the committee's recommendation that we adopt the one that came from Mission. I believe everybody got a copy at the last meeting. And we would only have one change to that under, uh, two A on the first page. A council member shall not perform any labor or furnish equipment or supplies to the city for compensation. He or she shall not be interested directly in any contract with the city which may have remuneration awards to the council member. If voting on any such matters, as previously mentioned, the council member must abstain the vote. So if, if voting on any such matter is in addition to that number two.
It's basically you're saying a conflict of interest.
Right.
State law is pretty clear on that. It does allow a city councilman, if they go through the bidding process, there's bids or requests out, if they're the cheapest one in the, the rest of the, in the state court, that they can vote for the city.
Right.
And this says that evolutes in state court, it will not be allowed.
I think, you know, with a small community like they are, it's like kinda hard to, you know, but like that part in there makes it so that, um, they wouldn't vote on it, but they would have to stay in contracting issues totally.
Well, I, I don't see.
Yeah, but the first part of it kind of eliminates it.
So they just pick the vote.
Right, but if, if we put in that second, that last piece that I just mentioned, if voting on any such matter, uh, previously mentioned, the council member must abstain from the vote. So it would be, as Wes said, complying with a type of a dangerous situation.
So if, if a council member would have put in a bid on something that's by far cheaper than that's the city, as long as he knows the vote on the street.
Right.
That's what the state.
Right.
Okay.
I have several issues with that deal you're talking about. I don't have mine with me tonight, but there, there's other issues in there I think we need to talk about before we ever adopt that.
Well, this is one we're talking about it. You wanna put it out until the next meeting or it's fine?
I think we should, I think we should, I guess, talk about it. Uh, I, I don't know when, when the place would be.
Maybe you can just, Carl, on between meetings, express your concerns and what kind of. Okay. Okay. And we'll wait and see what happens. Maybe we'll back next meeting, maybe not. That's it, Carl?
Yep.
Vote works, right?
Okay, we met with, uh, Johnson Control again, uh, the company that's, uh, wanted to do some work for us to save us money to basically pay for the work that they're gonna do and improve it to us. And our, our recommendation with him, he wants to change up five percent of the water meters in town and take the old meters and test them to prove that we are losing that much revenue on them meters. But he couldn't give us a price of what the initial five percent would be. And so he will meet at the next public works meeting to tell us what that price should be. We will make a recommendation there. We can go with it.
When is your next public works meeting?
Uh, the Tuesday before the next council meeting at two o'clock.
That would be what day?
Be the twenty-sixth, next Tuesday, week from tomorrow.
Yep, twenty-sixth.
So he will have a number for us on this initial five percent. And after he does that five percent, and if they, if they test out, then he wants a contract to change every meter in town. The money saved over that time will pay for the amount of change.
I wanted to, the reason I asked you when your next meeting was, was that, uh, when we have vote next week, when we get the authorization from the public to go ahead and buy the plunge, if we could add in the electrical rehab that we need to do on the lights there and the HVAC system, in that part of what they're proposing to us to, with concern to our buildings.
I don't believe they looked at the law.
No, but I'm saying, uh, would it be, would it be able to be?
Would it be possible to?
Enter into that with them.
Yeah.
We were trying, we were trying to target things that actually could possibly pay for themselves.
This would too.
Well, we don't, we don't know that until he looks at it and tells them he thinks it's.
Well, he's already told us that, uh, changing some of the lighting now is gonna pay for itself.
He's told us that all over town, we know that.
Yeah, well, that's, that would include if we got plunged, that would include the plunge.
Where are you gonna get this money? To start doing repairs before you even have authorization to buy it.
I, I said it could be included at that meeting with Johnson Control. I'm not saying that we're gonna pay for it right now. We're not paying for any of this right now.
It'll be an election day. It is your meeting on the election day, so it might be jumping the gun a little bit, Carl, but we can definitely think of.
We have time on that.
Depends on how the vote goes, I guess.
Yep.
Okay, and update on the city cleanup. Uh, the cash cost for dumping the material received was six hundred seventy-five bucks. Our labor cost was averaged at twelve hundred eighty bucks, for a total of just over two thousand dollars. Or under two thousand, sorry, or. And the next cleanup week will be April twenty-ninth through May third. And it seemed to go pretty smooth. There was a couple of issues with taking TVs that we thought we couldn't take, but we are gonna take TVs next time, but we have to sort them in a different pile. We'll get to some of that. Our annual drinking, we, water, drinking water report is in. And it's available at City Hall for anybody who wants to look at it. And we're gonna send the report to all the river water users. We discussed the RV water fill station again. And it's my personal opinion that we need to separate these two. Put the RV dump over here and move the water fill station down to the sewer plant. Just to keep the congestion, as much congestion we can on this part. Just to keep the congestion as much congestion we can out of this part of it. And so that's the direction I'm gonna steer it, I don't know if I got everybody on board yet, that's where I'd like to go. Alden Street Sewer Project, we're back to the original proposal again. After numerous ideas and walking the mountain many times. Back to the original idea of what we first came up with and see what we're seeing ahead of that. Equipment, we are looking for a side dump trailer for the cleanup days at Hall and Rush to the city. So we're trying not to buy a brand-new one, like find a good used one, so if anybody knows where one's at, have a call, Harlan.
Wait for the state auction.
State doesn't have any. They, they have a bid one for twelve years, so try to buy one on state bid.
We got enough property that we can get far enough away from the river where that's not gonna be an issue.
And we are currently working on that property between the Dimick property and the other property that we already own. Dimick's property has been given to the city, we're cleaning that up. And then there's another property just adjacent to it, in between all the rest that we own, that is being worked on to be cleaned up too.
Access should be a problem?
No. Should be plenty of that.
Water dump station or the RV?
Water dump.
Yeah, we got a lot of ground now. I might add that anybody wants to look at the plans for the RV dump station. Go talk to Tracy at City Hall, he's got a map of what we're proposing to do to add parking spaces and where the, where the station's gonna go.
Is our webpage gonna be up anytime soon, it'd be convenient for things like that where we could access it.
Almost two years, you know, Harlan.
I didn't hear it either.
Website, when are we gonna have a website?
I, I hesitate to say it because of all the issues we've been having, but I was guaranteed last week that it'll be up within the next three weeks.
Heard that a few months ago.
Isn't that that company you suggested go with?
Yes, I did.
I would just say for things like the Evans plunge stuff and things like this, it'd be really beneficial for people who could access it. Versus coming to City Hall. Uh, did you?
The, the mayor that spoke at the last forum chewed me out too, he said your website is. Just what he said.
We already talked about the RFPs. And quotes to the maintenance shed, we already, if anybody wants to know prices, I can tell them, but we already took the three, the cheapest ones. The tow vehicle story, we're gonna meet with, who's we gonna meet with, one of the, the owners or?
Well, we thought we'd make an invite for.
Yeah, and go over it next meeting. Condemnation, we talked about that. Went down there with the engineer and looked at it. Guess it's up to them now. Was sent to the library to look at it. The roof needs work real bad. And it's got some drainage problems in the back. Harley told me the street department can do that, or the water or sewer or somebody. They're really busy now, so it's hard to say when they'll get to it.
Is the roof leaking on the library?
Not leaking, but a lot of tiles are broken, falling off.
It was one of the items that Johnson Control had suggested for replacement in their proposal.
Skateboard ordinance, dropped the, you know, law to ordinance to sixteen and remove that. The DOT trial reversal parking, we decided to go with that. I don't have a date now, when did we talk about that, that the state was gonna try to do that?
Uh, we're, we're gonna visit with the state on, on a possible date, and then I'm gonna need some locations from you guys, from your committee.
I thought we talked about from the bridge, like to the police station.
Right there, right in City Hall, right there, the bridge area, all the way down towards intersection.
There was some concern that that's not used much, and if we really wanna trial, we need to be in an area where, where it gets used a little bit.
City Hall might be used?
Where'd that concern come from? Mayor?
You should send in with RV. No, I'm just, I'm just.
But it's just gotta be an area that people really.
And that's fine, we need to trial it before we do it.
I was hoping to maybe get a recommendation out of the DOT on where they might suggest trying to trial on it too, if they've got an area of safety concern.
What do they wanna do, one block area or something?
I don't know that they wanna do it, but what they suggested is that we consider that, it's never been done in the state of South Dakota. And after I brought, I've been meeting with several groups, and that's open invitation to anybody that wants to come by and look at the plans for the redoing of the highway all the way from the north end of town, all the way through to the bypass. Uh, scheduled now currently for, to start in two thousand eighteen. So about a two and a half to three-year project all total. But one of the suggestions that they were talking about is eliminating parking as part of this. And I always fetish ruffle up, we talked about eliminating parking in the tourist community, so they said if we would consider reverse diagonal parking, uh, they would consider not eliminating any parking through the project, so, or they would work hard to prove that.
Safety committee discussed it, thought we should do a trial period and see how things.
And all the sidewalks are gonna be redone on that project too or not?
Yes.
Okay, that might address your concern.
But it's three, eight, nine, five years out.
Few years out, yeah.
Airport glider space. We're gonna look at a pole barn, putting up a pole barn. With the gliders to go to, so we can rent more spaces out, they want to bring more gliders down, going out in the green form. And if we went with a pole barn for the gliders, if they ever moved out, it wouldn't work for nothing else, so we talked about a regular pole barn. Just a ground floor. And we talked about, I mean, we went with the field water shop, myself and engineer about cleaning it out, so we can do something with it eventually. And people still taking things up there and storing, so we need to get all the departments to get that, you know?
We're going backwards on.
Yes, we are. The clock, Harley Lux told me last week that we was gonna have a clock put up last week. When it's in the sixties and seven.
They weren't able to obtain a sonic tube that was large enough for them to stick in the ground, is what I was told.
They're busy cleaning up trailer houses down by the sewer plants, their main gang. So you have a timeframe maybe before summer time?
Yes, before summertime.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's down by the old depot.
Down by the old depot, along the south side of the depot.
The hole's there, the wiring has been put in for the underground wiring to come from the depot, so the work is commenced on it, it's just the concrete hasn't been poured yet. For the base.
Doesn't it really, I talked to Tracy and, and you guys say that the hole they put be. Tracy don't seem to think it needs to be.
I didn't think so either.
That's what Scott said it had to be.
For some reason, we got four, four yards of mud, hold up two hundred pound of cloth. Well, I thought we were mistaken down the tree and looking, just putting it on top of the other light.
Yeah, we, we would have electricity, full-time electricity.
It's gotta have a dedicated physical shower.
Those houses are in there.
Early, those labels configured.
Most of the light holes where they looked at, the, the head of the clock and stick out past the curb and be into the driving lane of the, of the highway. On the historic light poles, they were gonna take out.
You know, they make the sidewalks closer, shorter, narrower, might really be bad.
So are you gonna take out the memorial apple tree down to depot?
No trees are coming out.
No. So where's the clock going?
You'd have to go look to, to explain it, it's, just go look, you can see the salted plant where it is. There's piece of plywood covering the hole.
No trees will be killed in the process of this plant.
Cultural restoration. Yeah, okay, got a couple, got a couple of things here. In the parks department, uh, the bleachers are right on the edge of being finished. According to the insurance company that wrote up a, a discrepancy on the bleachers, so the bleachers are being redone. They have all the equipment for the swing sets to make them, them legal again. And then one of the other things we brought up, that maybe Hot Springs needs a dog park. Because, because other people have indicated that people are walking their dogs through parks here. And the dogs are doing their business and they are not cleaning them up. So if we have a dog park, the dogs could do whatever they wanted.
There's ordinance being said, they can catch them, we can find them.
No, I, I under, I, I understand that, but a lot of the kids wouldn't have planned up the kind of parks. All the dogs are just doing their duty and nobody's cleaning the mess up and.
It's not just dogs either, 'cause the kids have told me with the sandbags, it's like a big kitty box.
And my cats are all.
Dog park was, was interjected into the possibility or into the realm of the council of doing something about it, uh, before your time. So about four years ago. I, well, see, if we would start and put a dog park in.
We would, we just, does it make one of the parks we have now for dog park?
Or an area of the park?
Yeah, that's stuff right down by the river that you just accepted. That's a dog. We could, we could do that, we could do that too, but I don't think that would be appropriate for the motel state. Why wouldn't it? Property belongs to the city, they're giving it to us, we'll make it a park.
So why are you proposing a dog park?
Uh, no proposal yet.
I already know where it's proposed.
Well, they talked about down at that free lamp, and now they're putting water thing, they're gonna have a.
Those are the dogs without somewhere to drink.
Why would that be, why would that be out of the vision? There's a lot of ground down there.
We don't own all that, it's not continuous property. There's still a couple, five hours.
There's only one in between.
No, there's two.
There's only one.
No, there's two, Ellen Iverson and her daughter, it's a piece over there.
We're not talking about that yet.
No, they aren't.
No, they aren't. You guys put our key back. I got a few, I got a few more items here. What I mean, Ellen Iverson does not own the park.
I know that.
Okay, one thing that if you wanna use any of the rooms at the library, you have to now make reservations. Because our library is starting to be so busy that you have to make reservations to use the, the rooms, because they are having computer classes, chess classes, poet classes. They're just having a little bit of everything, so.
Good news to you, Cindy.
Because we have one of the busiest libraries around, and then we're gonna have another young lady of June go to another library class. And, well, let's see. I have to, I have to read my notes. Also discussed, also discussed about getting a couple more items for the Mueller Center here. Uh, one is gonna be a garbage disposal, and another one is a commercial dishwasher.
Can I spread this out a little bit?
I am. Last month, every other, every other meeting that we're gonna do, because if you notice in your, in your packet, I believe there was some kind of note that they're having.
Dishwasher problem?
Yeah, yes, dishwasher problem, because they have five hundred dishes. Uh, we also wanna get a popcorn machine here, so in event that, we have movies, we can have popcorn. Or like Wes wanted a hot dog warmer, so I'm, I'm looking all into this. Yes. Okay, that's, that's just about all I got, you got anything? You wanna add to this? That's it, Mayor. Joe? Harley?
Uh, just to remind you, special election next Tuesday, all wards at the Mueller Center. Uh, absentee balloting has been going well, we've had several come through on that. Uh, petition deadline is also March twenty-sixth at five P M, for those of you that have petitions out, we do have petitions filed for Craig Roney and for Tim Kesher. So those two are currently in the running, petitions are out floating around for other positions that are open, so. Keep that in mind, you have one week to get them in, one week and a day. Uh, District Nine meeting, we had mentioned of the municipal league, that'll be up in New Underwood, I do need to know if you're planning to attend by April third. Spouses are welcome if you wanna take your spouse along, but let Debbie know, uh, the actual date of the meeting is April seventeenth. One other small announcement, when I was hired, uh, you were gracious enough to allow me two years to relocate. Now, that two years are up in August, and I've been house hunting, or I should say, we have been house hunting, I've done that with my wife. Uh, we do have an offer on a house that's been accepted in town, in the city limits, so we will be working through the process of finalizing financing. I do have to sell my other one up north and do some other things before this is final, but I should be well in town before the August deadline that you've given me to relocate.
Which one, northeast Elwin?
The one I'm living in right now.
Hope you hold like five or six and leave.
Uh, you want some of them, but I tried to get rid of it for a while.
Dwight's, he's a landlord.
I think a hell of a deal. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
The only thing I have is that, uh, I was gonna say if the governor gave the state employees part of the day off on Good Friday, we would do the same thing. It's not on the agenda, and they did, he did give, uh, four hours and afternoon off on Good Friday, so we'll do the same thing, we'll kind of take action, we'll propose. Our personnel manual says that basically if they do this, it isn't really clear, but it says if the state does this, we'll do it too.
Oh, it's the county.
State, it's the state. So anyway, we, we'll be given four hours off on Good Friday for the, for the afternoon. That's one thing I have, we do have rule executive session for legal and personnel.
Motion to go into executive session.
Okay, hold on a second. If you want to get into that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?